So we're back in open session. Chancellor Burke will provide a welcome greeting.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our Zoom board meeting at the South Orange County Community College District. We thank you for your patience as we continue to navigate this virtual platform. We welcome the board members who are participating via Zoom webinar. Please be advised that everyone participating via Zoom video or call has been muted. Trustees Jigit Prendergaff, Tim Jamal, Jenny Wright, David Lang, Barbara Jay, Marcia Milchaker, Carrie Whitredell, and trustee Ethan Monafi have been designated as panelists. We also welcome any members of our district community and the members of the public who are viewing the meeting live via Zoom webinar. Following the meeting, the district will make a recording available on the SOCCCD website. As a reminder, board members are asked to use the raised cam feature via Zoom when they wish to speak and are encouraged to mute their audio when not speaking to minimize disruption. The board is open to receiving public comments. The published agenda requested public comments be submitted in advance of the meeting by email. Public comments will be read aloud at the appropriate times during the meeting. I would now like to turn the meeting over to trustee Prendergaff, who will call the meeting to order.
Okay, the October 19, 2020 meeting in South Orange County Community College District Board of Trustees is hereby called to order. This governing board meeting is conducted pursuant to California Government Code, Section 54953, and Governor Newsom's executive order N2920 and N3520. I ask that trustees mute themselves at this time. First, report actions taken in closed session, report by the chancellor.
There are two items. On February 25, 2019, the South Orange County Community College District Board of Trustees unanimously took action to terminate a tenure to faculty member. After an appeal, this decision was affirmed and has now become final. Also, on a seven to zero roll call vote, the board took action in closed session pursuant to Government Code, Section 54957, to consider and approve the decision of a hearing officer on the disciplinary discharge of a senior administrative assistant. Pursuant to Board Policy 4205, the board shall make a judgment that the recommendation of the hearing officer was taken for reasonable cause, or that the recommendation of the hearing officer should be sustained in full, modified, or rescinded. The board acted to approve the decision of the hearing officer.
Okay, next we have invocation led by trustee Jay, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by trustee Jamal.
Our heavenly Father, we come to you in gratitude for our many blessings. We are so thankful for our wonderful administrators, faculty, classified staff, and police officers who have given so much of themselves and have worked together to help our students and institution get through this pandemic. We are so grateful for everybody working together to get our classes online and available to our community. We are grateful for our incredible unselfishness and hard work shown by all those involved in and donating to our support program and foundations for their efforts in providing emergency help and funds for our students and employees. Help us as a board to bring the college together to get through these challenging times and to serve as best as we can for our students. Please bless and watch over all our students, staff, and community. Help our nation to come together in this time of crisis with freedom, health, and justice for all. Help us especially to be patient, kind, loving, and tolerant during these uncertain times. Amen.
Sorry, I was muted. Please, please join with me in reciting our Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any public comments?
No.
All right, we'll move on to the reports, board reports. Let's see, I'll go by order of appearance here on the list. Trustee Jay.
Thank you. I have two topics I'd like to bring to the board's attention this evening. First and foremost, on October 22 this year, IVC will celebrate its 35th anniversary by kicking off its inaugural IVC Giving Day. Now that's just in three days. This is a community alumni, student, parent, friend, neighbor, faculty, and staff coming together to give back to the institution that has given them so much. This effort will support scholarships, programs that we care most about, and will encourage more community members to turn their knowledge into action. Thanks to our Pro IVC matching campaign, your gift will make an even bigger impact. For every $2 given, Pro IVC will match it with a dollar. I strongly support this effort and encourage all in the IVC laser and South Orange County Community College District families to participate. Please join me in giving to this most worthy cause. Second is regarding the Saddleback College mascot, the Gaucho controversy. There has been some rhetoric by leaders and some unilateral action taken that seemed to be at odds with the wishes of the Saddleback community. I have a long history with Saddleback College Gauchos. As many of you know, my late husband, Bill Jay, served as president of Saddleback College as a district vice chancellor and as a trustee. We attended many events, many events at the college and were very big Gaucho supporters, which I still am. I fully expect that any recommendations about further changing the Saddleback College Gaucho nickname or logo will be considered by the entire Saddleback College community, including the alumni, and submitted to the Board of Trustees for deliberation and public comment. I further expect that no more actions to change this tradition will be taken until the community comes to an agreement and board approval is obtained. Thank you.
Trustee Lang.
Yes, I have no report this evening.
Trustee Wright.
I just have one item I want to talk about. That's the addition of additional return of students to onsite instruction for the fall 2020. Both colleges are returning students to onsite instruction by October 19, 2020. Irvine Valley College is preparing for the return of 186 intercollegiate athletics for conditioning classes. Competition continued to be prohibited based on a decision by the CCCAA Board of Directors who oversee and regulate athletic statewide. Saddleback College is returning 108 students in music performing ensembles and 369 students in intercollegiate athletics also for conditioning classes. These students are in addition to the face-to-face instruction taken place in the health sciences since the beginning of the fall semester. I want to report that the chemistry students returned to campus for laboratory instruction. The mathematics, science, and engineering division and chemistry department welcomes students back to campus for laboratory instructions on Monday, October 5, to give students the ability to have critical, hands-on experiences conducting experiments. 10 sections of general and organic chemistry will have on campus laboratory instruction scheduled for the next eight weeks. The math, science, and engineering division and the chemistry department have spent the last few months preparing for this return with department chair Teresa Bear. And finally, the automatic technical students returned to campus. The Saddleback Auto Tech Program returned for classes that were identified as hard-to-convert labs for the state of California assemble jobs, essential jobs. Students were brought back in small cohorts and are performing modified labs that reinforce instruction. When possible, the labs are being held outdoors so that programs can support social distances for safe interactions with other students, faculty, and staff. Afterused tools and work areas are sanitized and prepped for the next batch of students. Students share that they are thrilled to return to campus and appreciate the opportunity to perform the skills they have learned online. Thank you.
Let's see, Ridell.
Okay, for the sake of time, I had a very busy month with board activities. I've attended several of the CCCCL, which means California Community College League webinars, and this last one on Thursday was most informative. It was called DEA, which means, as you know, diversity, equity, and inclusion. Sometimes they change those words around, but DEA in curriculum and vision, resource center training. I was most impressed with the DEA given by Ms. Lowe, who's the vice chancellor of education services and support for California community colleges. And I, and I know, can you, I don't know if you can see me, but this is, this is our template. And to give it to you briefly, it's discussing radical and cultural differences seen as deficits, tolerant, then we go to tolerant of radical and cultural differences, and then we go to radical and cultural differences seen as assets. And I think this is the most important, these are the most important groups of words that I've seen in all the changes that we want to make with DEI. I also just wanted to share with you, she just talked about history of ethics studies. I don't know if you knew this, but the first relevant study in ethics in California community colleges only came in 1988. This really surprised me. And I just wanted you to know that CE, the California State Universities and the UC universities have approved this AS 3438, not that I expect you to know that, but they recommend core competencies, and the core competencies have to do with DEA. They have taken three units out of their social sciences and now study ethics, or are going to study ethics science, which I assume is going to come into its own programs. Then I had a most interesting experience. I decided to attend, I decided to attend a phenomenal, what turned out to be a really phenomenal conference. It is the 2020 ACCT, which means the Association of Community College Trustees. I've never done that before, and it was their leadership conference. It was four days from 10:00 a.m. to 6:45, and I want to tell you, I did attend. It was virtual, and I thought I could multitask during it, but it was so interesting that I really took notes on almost every single presentation. What was so cool about it, we're talking about from here to Vermont, to Florida, to the Midwest, to California, to Washington, Oregon. I mean, it was all of the states represented. And it took me, just as trustee Jamal would know, where they were talking about their president, and I thought they're talking about, they're talking about our presidents, but in the East Coast and Midwest, they call their chancellor president and CEO. Okay, so I got that under my belt. But let me just tell you a few of the conferences. Board community protocol communication between board and president, which meant chancellor. I attended behavioral interventions and campus security on a budget. I attended the board and CEO maximizing their relationships. Again, this was truly about the trustee, trustees, and how we can communicate with our district, with our leaders, and with our community. We talked about non-academic barriers, and I have to tell you, we are very fortunate at Saddleback and at IVC. With some of these Midwest and East Coast colleges, the small ones, they really have a low budget for this. We talked about child development centers. I was so surprised that so many colleges have their own child development centers and emergency scholarships, which we do have. We talked about catalyzing equity work on campus. A lot of these colleges, the small ones especially, are really far ahead of us in implementing the equity programs. We talked about board retreats, meaning trustee board retreats, and strategies and vehicles that are cohesive and cohesive amongst the board and between the board and the chancellors, and between the board and the district, and between the board and the entire colleges. Okay, then we talked about, should the board have subcommittees? I mean, all of these things, I really enjoy in serving on the board, but it really gave me some insight of what more we could do, and the board and its governing functions. I want to tell you, from here to New York, we all have problems. And guess what? They are similar problems, and the solutions are similar, but I learned some new solutions. So my trustees, when we have our next retreat, or maybe at the next gala, I'll be glad to share these with you. Okay, another one that I really liked was how to recruit for strong leaders. And obviously, ACCT offers that service, but different people from, again, different states talked about what they did, and it was very, very useful, took notes. So thank you for your attention. Have a good meeting.
Trustee Milchaker.
Hi, I too attended the trustee weekly webinars every week along with trustee Ridell. And right now, I, as you know, I have taken the Excellence in Trusteeship Award, and I already attained that, and now I have an opportunity to recertify this award or in this program. Just want to bring it to the board's attention that we could do this as a board if we're so interested, or if anyone wants more information on how to attain the Excellence in Trusteeship Award, please let me know, and I'll let you know about it. I also attended IVC's virtual memorial for RBG, and it was, it was quite, quite an event online. And Saddleback College's book club, and it was really good to get to know some of the staff at Saddleback College and discuss the current book of the year. And at the Orange County Community College Legislative Task Force, where all four districts work together, right now, we're trying to help our districts get the clinical placement that they need at UCI, and we'll hear more about it later on in the board meeting, when our, our staff members that work with us will tell us about what they're doing. Also, I attended Bailando Bachata on Saddleback College Art Program with dance instructor Steve Rosa. And I just thought I'd mention from Chancellor Burke's report, I'd like to congratulate Pyrit Jerome, who just won the 2020 Procurement Professional of the Year Award, from IVC President Hernandez's report. I look forward to taking the IVC virtual tour for recording international students and many other diverse students. And from the Saddleback College President's report, I'd like to congratulate Saddleback College on the ballot bowl and getting students to vote, and for broadcasting emergency preparedness on Channel 39. A few upcoming events I'd like to highlight. Professor Gina Schaefer, the Saddleback College Literary Journal editor and professor of English, always has an event every year called The Wall, when they, when they produce their literary journal called The Wall, and they have students reading selections, and you could see this via YouTube this Thursday at 7:00 p.m. And Friday night, the IVC will have a concert online again. Dr. Daniel Lusko, the piano professor extraordinaire at IVC, will be performing his symphony number one. It'll be a lecture and a recital. And if you look at the Saddleback College Arts page, you'll find fabulous arts events, theater productions, art gallery, virtual tours, and jazz faculty in concert, and many, many more, including Bachata lessons. So thanks.
Trustee Jamal.
So I was, had a chance to get interviewed again on Laguna Woods TV, and that was fantastic, as it, as it usually is, although via Zoom. I also want to thank our faculty and staff administration for continuing to adapt to COVID-19, and especially faculty with online instruction. I know how challenging it is. On a somewhat personal note, it's been a pretty rough three weeks for me. As some of you know, this board has declared April 24 Armenian genocide remembrance day. And regrettably, over the last three weeks, I've borne witness to two tyrannical oligarchic regimes wage an ethnic cleansing campaign against my ancestral homeland. It's been, we have family in the region, but beyond that, it's been very difficult, not as difficult it is for the 18 to 22-year-olds who are losing their lives. You know, trustee Jay, you mentioned freedom in your invocation, and we should never take it for granted. You know, Armenians are free, at least they were up until three weeks ago, who live in that part of the world. It is a brutal assault. Civilians are being targeted, civilian infrastructure. And you wonder, why does that part of the world matter to us? What binds us together to our allies? Is it economics? It is. Is it the military alliances in part? But what's the, what's the biggest bind that ties us together? It's our values. It's our freedom. It's our liberties. We're a nation because of self-determination of people. That concept is ever-present, and I appreciate what this board has done recognizing this day. It's really rough, but I can't complain because I see what's happening to the young men and women over there. And I am hoping for some kind of lasting peace, so with self-determination of people. Thank you.
Okay, I just would be remiss if I didn't, as a government teacher, bring up that today is the last day to register to vote. You have until midnight to go to ocvote.com, and you can register electronically and exercise your, your right to vote. So please do so if you have not done so already. All right, so student trustee Monafi.
Everyone, I really enjoyed listening to your reports this evening. As much as I called from my last report, I was working with both colleges to ensure our students know how to register to vote and participate in this election. Since then, I have been amazed by the amount of dedication and enthusiasm from both colleges to host of engagement events entirely reaching out to students on social media and sending email reminders. Like trustee Metcher did, I'm pleased to announce Saddleback is actually in the top 10 in California community colleges, the highest student with a registration, which is amazing. I also want to thank, want to thank Dr. Stan and Dr. Hernandez and the health center of both colleges for hosting free drug-free food shots. In the past few years, students had to pay a charge if they wanted to get their food shots from our colleges, and these students could receive them at no cost. I really hope this could be an ongoing policy now that we know how much vaccines matter and how even a few, a few kids lost their food could affect our whole community. It's also very beneficial to uninsured students and students who prioritize other expenses or don't have access to other places who offer food shots. Personally, I attended the CCLC webinar on equating curriculum and on October 15, like other trustees did. And they talk about having more ethics studies classes and other courses that focus on different identities and cultures. We also introduced their new platform called Vision Resource Center that allows registered community colleges to hold virtual training and discussions with all the employees and staff online. That's my report. Thank you.
Okay, next we have ASG. Anne Marie, do we have either or both?
I'm here. I'll represent ASIVC tonight. So first of all, thank you for having me here as always. I hope everyone had a great evening, and I hope everyone is always staying safe and cautious as this unprecedented time continues. I'll keep it pretty brief. So over here in ASIVC, we just finished off our second wave of elections. So we have a spring election, and now we just finished our fall election. So the nine remaining senators have been elected, so that makes 29 members in ASIVC currently. So we have a full house finally. And then we finished off that election process with having a fall leadership retreat to kind of allow the past members, current members, and new members intermingle and get to know one another and really build some substantial leadership opportunities that we need in order to thrive this semester and beyond. One notable thing is that we had our justices come together and select an appointment for chief justice in which they followed an election process. And so I'm glad to announce we finally have a chief justice, and it's the first time in about two years that ASIVC has had, let alone a judicial court, but also a chief justice now. I particularly like to highlight our ad hoc committees at this time. So we have started a civic engagement ad hoc committee to kind of work in liaisonship with the civic engagement group on IVC's campus. And this allows for students from ASIVC and students from the campus to bring their ideas about how we can connect students with more civic engagement opportunities and kind of drive the momentum that we feel right now as the election comes closer. We want to maintain that momentum throughout the school year. So civic engagement is an ongoing process and not just one event happening every other year. The second ad hoc committee I want to highlight is our Guided Pathways Ad Hoc Committee. So there actually is a guided pathways and completion team on campus, but we really want to get more students involved in that process. And my executive vice president and I had the opportunity to attend the Guided Pathway Summit last November, and so the same team reached out to us this year asking if we could get more students involved because they love to hear these, the perspectives, and they really want to refine their processes and their resource guide so that it's student-tested and student-proven. So this ad hoc committee has been really successful. There's over 10 students that are participating in it currently, and we hope to gather more minds and more insight over the course of this semester to help out our completion team on campus. Lastly, I just really want to highlight that this week is Undocumented Student Action Week, so I implore all of you to participate in some way. You can find registration links on their website. I think it'd be particularly important for everyone in this virtual room to attend at least one webinar to find out how you can cater your efforts more towards our undocumented students on campus. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have Saddleback ASG?
I'm not seeing Saddleback IVC online. Saddleback ASG, sorry.
All right, well, if they contact you, let me know. Saddleback College Academic Senate.
Good evening, members of the Board of Trustees. We're in Week 10 of instruction, and I think the, the challenges of teaching online and Zoom are starting to become more apparent day by day. I was speaking with my students just this week about returning to campus for our lab classes, and we all came to an agreement that we would remain on Zoom, even as challenging as it is to teach lab classes on Zoom, because of the risks to students, to faculty coming on the campus. With the numbers of infections in Orange County not really improving at this point. We've been steady, but not really improving in terms of numbers of infections. So we made the difficult challenge to stay, we chose to challenge ourselves by staying on Zoom and trying to get the same amount of work done. What I'm hearing from my faculty members is that they are exhausted from the effort of capturing the students' imagination and attention and keeping them engaged as we continue to teach in Zoom. So lots of thank yous to all of the faculty who continue to work hard at. So, lots of thank yous to all of the faculty who continue to work hard at that. The Saddleback Academic Senate has reached out to all of our faculty members to ask them to assist our students on Election Day by giving them time to go vote if they need to vote in person, backing off on quiz and test schedules that day if they can do that, essentially giving our students as much opportunity as possible to get the vote out. We have a president's book club this year, and we're reading How to Be an Anti-Racist and discussing it on campus. And I have to say also, I have a lot of respect for the process of considering the Saddleback mascot, the Gaucho. We're now a Hispanic-serving institution, and I think we have to look very carefully at a mascot that offends no ethnic or racial groups. And I think that process has been continuing on our campus. We've had several meetings about it campus-wide, including students, faculty, the community. We continue to have more meetings. So, I think if you are concerned about that process or you want to be engaged in that process, there has been opportunity to do that. And I think we have to be very mindful and careful of providing respect to all the members of our community with our choice of the mascot. That's it for tonight. Thank you very much.
Okay. Irvine Valley College Academic Senate.
Good evening. Prayer before community college school district board meetings and why it is no longer a good idea. And I am going to upset Blake by saying, why is Saddleback now reconsidering its mascot? Why is that happening now? And I would ask the board to contemplate that after I say what I'm going to say. I truly believe this board's decision to have a prayer before its meeting comes from a genuinely good place, a very thankful place. But it's on the wrong side of history, and the board's continued insistence on a Protestant Christian prayer displays a level of tone deafness. I've read the Town of Greece v. Galloway case that the board is relying on and lawyers' opinions relying on, decided in 2014, allowing prayer before legislative meetings, and it doesn't violate the First Amendment. And that reasoning was based on the status quo, how we have always done things, how the founding fathers did things, and things like time-honored American heritage. I do not believe this board is praying in order to establish a Christian religion, and it's not violating the First Amendment. This board has the right and the power to have a Protestant prayer before meetings. I've read the board's resolutions made in 2009 and 2011, upholding and further refining prayers and invocations. And so, this is not a question of whether there's a power to do it. It's a question about whether the board should do it, and I believe it shouldn't. White privilege is something the board needs to face. You are in a position of power obtained through privilege. You are privileged if you are sitting there. You are privileged if you are white. You are privileged if you are male. Every Protestant Christian prayer you make before a board meeting aligns this board with those beliefs. And I just wonder why? If it's not clear after hashtag Me Too and Black Lives Matter that the status quo supports and upholds bias as well as unwanted and unearned privilege, then maybe it'll become clear as Saddleback contemplates its Gaucho mascot and has that discussion since the board is clearly focused on that. But I get it. I'm white, and I experience privilege. I am also a daughter of the American Revolution. I understand American heritage. I also have rights under the First Amendment to say all kinds of things in this report that might upset people. I can say things in my classroom that might marginalize people or affect marginalized populations, but I don't because I worry about the impact my words have on others. And I've done enough training at this point that I have to be careful because I have privilege and because I'm white. When you make a Protestant Christian prayer before a meeting, you are using a position of power to say, "We are this, and if you are not like us, you are other." And I know that's not what you mean to do, but you're doing it. Rethink this choice you've made. IVC faculty want to hear how you are facing your privilege, and we look forward to your report in November regarding that. Thank you.
Faculty Association.
The Faculty Association would like to call attention to the fact that, under the current pandemic campus shutdowns, faculty members have been doing a tremendous amount of work, as my colleague Blake mentioned a few moments ago, to keep up with student instruction. Now, as is appropriate, when we first went into the shutdown mode, one of the things we first thought of was how to support our students so that they will be able to maintain their success under these extraordinary circumstances. And the faculty has been working endlessly, hour upon hour, to make sure that works. But one of the things I think that we may have overlooked is that not only the faculty, but also classified staff and administrators have been shouldering an additional burden under these circumstances, but have not been receiving the same amount of attention in terms of support. And so, I would like to advocate that the district look to methods of providing support to faculty, staff, and administrators who are feeling anxious, stressed, and overworked under the current circumstances. Many of my colleagues are reporting that they're working seven days a week, 12 hours a day, just to maintain the workload in their classes. I've seen deans who are working over, beyond overtime in order to keep up with their faculty evaluations, for example. And so, many of those people are facing unprecedented workloads. At the same time, they're cut off from any of their traditional methods of relieving stress and anxiety, including, if nothing else, just simply hallway conversations with colleagues. And so, I am hoping that, over the course of the next few months, that the district will look carefully at ways of supporting faculty, staff, and administrators who are facing this tremendous workload without the benefit of the kinds of support services that we have been constructing for students. Thank you.
Okay. Irvine Valley College Classified Senate.
Good evening, Board of Trustees. Just wanted to give you a report of what we've been up to in this last month. Still working on our caring campus commitments, and those being two documents that we would have had when we were on campus. But right now, it's even more important than ever, a frequently asked question sheet as well as a campus guide that will help us navigate virtually here with all of our colleagues on the campus, even in this virtual environment. We're also adding in a lot of our meetings a caring campus moment where we're able to share out in moments that we've had with our students, our colleagues, and it's been a great time to hear all the work that we've been doing here in this virtual environment. Professional development, we have been very busy as Classified Senate to assist our classified with some technology training during our lunch period, so with some learning lunches. And I would like to thank our IT department for that help. We are also working on our Franklin Covey online trainings this year, and we're looking forward to, at the end of this month, on October 29th, our classified chat with our new president, Dr. Hernandez. So, thank you so much.
Okay. Saddleback College Classified Senate.
They aren't here.
All right. CSCA.
Thank you, Mr. President. Locally, CSCA has sent out a survey to its members to gauge what they feel under the COVID-19 working conditions. And we were surprised that nearly three-four say that they would rather be on campuses assisting students and providing the services that promote student success, and that a lot of their stress is from what they have to deal with as far as challenges working from home. However, they've done a tremendous job in adjusting to these now working conditions from home to make sure that online classes continue to take place and that continued services are provided. Recently, we had a workshop just last Friday entitled Empowering Classified Professionals, and it was given by Tom Brown. Tom Brown is a higher education consultant who has worked with more than 452-year, four-year colleges and universities. And his main focus in working with these colleges is on professional development and how to develop and empowering leadership and to be involved in programs which their missions have mainly focused on diversity, equity, and inclusion. So, we were very interested to have Mr. Brown as a presenter to classified staff. CSCA has also been very active in supporting efforts for people to register to vote through this effort. Even though this country is greatly divided, CSCA has recognized that its 240,000 members are both Democrats and Republicans, and we are all united on the issues pertaining to education. CSCA supports any issues which education is the primary focus. It seems that we have come a long way from the early days before the dawn of this country, when in the 13 colonies, the main requirement to vote was owning about 15 acres of land or to have 50 pounds of English currency in your pocket. We're certainly grateful that this democracy has the privilege to the basic right to vote. And whether communist governments or socialist governments realize it or not, it is the practice of democracy through its parliaments and their parliaments that allow for the governments to exist in the way that they do. And through our United States Constitution, which allows for all Americans to make free choices, is what we're so grateful for. Thank you.
Okay. Where are we at? I assume, do we have a POA?
No.
No board requests for reports. So, we're moving on to discussion item 4.1.
Good evening, trustees. Thank you for the opportunity to present our two legislative representatives. We have with us representatives from Strategic Education Services and Capital Advocacy Partners. You know them well. We've heard from them many times in the last several years. But, you know, we've been busy during this time, even with COVID. There have been a lot of policies being passed at the state and federal level, and with such tough times, we have really had to be strong advocates for our students and ensure that we're doing it in a safe manner. And there are dollars and funding out there to be utilized and to be applied for, for the benefit of our institutions and for our students. And so, with the help of Dale and Dana and their teams, we have been able to remain quite active in not only following legislation, but communicating with our representatives. So, I think you'll be really proud to learn of all the activity that's been going on during the quarantine time and really how we're planning to utilize our current platform and things that we've always believed in advocating for as we move into recovery mode during this COVID season. So, I think we'll kick it off. President Pranagash, do you have a preference on who do you like to go first? I think we have Dale teed up first.
That's fine.
Great. Dale, if you're with us, we'll let you start.
Good evening. This is Dale Shimisaki. Is David Nevin of my team on here too? Because he was going to present the first couple of slides.
Good afternoon. My name's David Nevin. I work with Dale Shimisaki at Strategic Education Services. And I would just like to start off with a couple of budget updates that have happened over the last very tumultuous year in the legislature and budget session. So, starting off, a couple of the highlights that happened throughout the budget process, we saw, as a result of the COVID-19 budget issues and problems, which I can get more into later on in the slides, the state had to make a couple of drastic changes to previous budget actions that had happened over the last couple of years, one of which being the CalSTRS and CalCURS employer contribution rates that were expected to increase over the 2019-20 fiscal year and up through the 2021-22 fiscal year, and then slowly decrease. And this is talking about the employer contribution rates. The 2020 Budget Act saw these employer contribution rates essentially held to their 2019 rates so as to provide a little bit of financial relief for community college districts going into the 2021 and 2021-22 fiscal years. The total from the state is about $2.3 billion to buy down all of, as much as they were financially able to. That $2.3 billion is spread out through both the community college and the K-12 system. The COVID-19 block grant is a $120 million one-time block grant that was provided for community colleges. This is allocated on a per-student basis, based on your enrollment, and it's a slight mix between state general fund from Proposition 98, as well as some federal funds that were provided in the CARES Act. Activities and expenses to support student learning and mitigate learning loss due to COVID are allowed and authorized by the chancellor's office, as well as the Department of Finance. Some of these allowable activities include COVID-19 contact tracing and testing, economic support for student housing, and food assistance for food insecure students, as well as expenses related to providing distance learning, personal protective equipment, and public health expenses related to COVID-19. I will note that one of the few stipulations that they put on the use of the funds is that it cannot be used for revenue backfill. And then, finally, for the state budget, SOCCD was able to secure just under $45 million worth of capital outlay funds. This is derived from the Proposition 51 bond funds that voters passed back in 2018. This provided $20.8 million for the Fine Arts Building at Irvine Valley College and $23.6 million for the Gateway Building at Saddleback College.
And David, I'll just interject really quickly. We did also receive capital outlay funding for the math and sciences.
Yes. There, yes, there was a smaller amount provided for that. And I apologize. These two were the larger, the capital outlay funds that were provided for the building phase of the buildings at IVC and at Saddleback College.
No, thank you. I have noted $16.7 million for that bill over two years.
Yes.
Thank you.
And so, for the budget trailer bill that was passed, there were a couple sets of budget trailer bills that were passed prior to the end of session. A lot of the trailer bill was geared towards reducing the costs of expenses related to the state budget. However, the legislature did manage to remove a lot of the cuts to community college districts statewide and instead relied more on the deferral process. There was a significant amount of deferrals statewide, and between the K-12 and community college districts, there was about $14 billion worth of deferral. The K twelve and community college districts, there was about fourteen billion dollars worth of deferrals over two-year period. Uh I'll get more, a little more into that later on. However, just uh the main part is that the legislature chose to take the less draconian. Method of um reducing the state's overall burden. Other provisions that were included in the budget trailer bill. It exempts COVID nineteen related expenditures from the fifty percent law that pertains to community college expenditures. Up through the end of the twenty twenty one fiscal year. There is also some flexibility to use Prop twenty lottery funds for laptops and internet. Connectivity that is related to distance learning and uh as the Chancellor's Office puts it, the continuity of education. Other provisions include prohibitions on layoffs for classified employees that are in the. Food nutrition, transportation, and custodial services programs. And finally, the last highlight is that the lieutenant governor position is now one of the voting members of the State Board of Governors.
Okay, um I have the next slides here um on legislation signed by the governor. Uh there were a number of pieces of legislation. The first A B uh six eighty five by Reyes. Requires employers to provide written notice and instruction to employees who who may have been uh exposed to COVID nineteen at their work site. Uh this was signed by the governor um early this year. Or late, or later this year's session. The second bill is A B fourteen sixty by Weber, which uh creates an ethnic studies graduation requirement in the C S U system. Uh the reason I bring this bill to your attention is that this could affect. Associate degree for transfer students going to the C S U. If C S U decides to implement this. Graduation requirement as a lower division requirement, it could affect and impact uh the associate degree for transfer student requirements. So we have to wait to see how C S U is going to determine to make this uh requirement. Uh whether it's a lower division or upper division requirement. So it'll be something that we'll be watching for um in the near future. Uh the next bill is A B twenty two eighty eight, which uh provides flexibility in a state of emergency to the Board of Registered Nursing. Regard to uh clinical requirements and uh some clinical simulations for certain. Programs in uh nursing um and health, health sciences. Uh this was actually a form of an emergency action that the governor took uh utilizing his emergency powers. But the bill, bill moved forward to try to implement it and codify it for for this and all future pet, future kinds of uh state of emergencies. The next bill, eleven um fifty nine um by Senator Hill. Creates um uh this reputable presumption that illness or death related to COVID nineteen. Is going to be an occupational injury and therefore be eligible for worker compensation benefits. So it will presume. That if someone passed or uh or was injured due to COVID nineteen, that they would be eligible for workers' compensation. But the employer could uh rebut the presumption or or take it up um uh in the process, in the appeals process. The next bill of interest is uh S B twelve thirty two by Senator Glazer. And this relates to um students who are eligible for Calworks benefits. If they are eligible for Calworks benefits. They would be, they would receive um uh a stipend for books and college supplies. Based on uh their student status. So if they are in a public post-secondary institution. Um and if they're uh in a part-time uh semester or quarter program, they could receive a stipend and the stipend. Ranges from a hundred and seventy five dollars to uh five hundred dollars per semester or quarter, depending on what your status is. And depending if you're in a quarter system or semester system. And uh the interesting feature about this bills is that you are exempt from the the welfare to work requirements. To be eligible for this fund. So if you're enrolled in students, a student enrolled in the public. Higher education institution, you can receive these benefits without having to go through the welfare to work requirements. And this will take effect in January of. Of this year, of the upcoming year. Uh the next slide. The next slide, uh just to mention a few bills that didn't make it through. This, the A B fourteen ninety two, the border Horvath bill was an employment uh requirement bill to uh establish provisions. And requirements uh to work from home. Should it raise questions of whether labor laws should um around meals and rest periods be implemented. In for those employees who tell a commute or not. Uh this bill did get held up in the Senate Labor and Public Employees and Retirement System. And it may uh show up again next year um in it when the legislature deliberates in January. Uh the next bill is A B seventeen fifty nine, a solace bill related to all institutions of higher education, whether public, private, or nonprofit. Related to uh liability uh for COVID nineteen. Uh this would have uh. Exempted um higher education institutions from COVID nineteen related injuries should they incur on campus. The bill wa- uh was amended in the Senate and was, it got to Senate Judiciary, but they did not hear uh the bill. The author of the bill and a number of higher education um advocacy organizations have expressed interest in reintroducing this bill next year. For uh for deliberation. Also, this provision and a similar provision, it was also in the federal stimulus. Your federal lobbyists might be able to comment further as to what the feasibility is of this of this kind of provision getting through uh at the federal level. The final bill that didn't make it through is S B eight seventy four Hill to expand uh the BA degree pilot program in the California Community College System. To allow for uh at least one BA degree pilot program for uh every campus. In in the community college system. As you know, currently, you're only allowed to have one within a district. Even though this bill didn't make it through the process, um Assembly Member Medina, who is the Chair of the Assembly Higher Education Committee. From Riverside uh has announced that he plans to reintroduce this bill in the next legislative session. Next slide, um I want to just comment briefly on the two ballot propositions that are coming up in November election that affect education. One is Proposition fifteen, which is a tax on commercial and industrial pop properties, of which a portion of those proceeds would go to um education. The legislative analyst estimates that if this ballot initiative passed, um that uh. K fourteen schools will receive between two point six billion and four point six billion dollars annually. Uh but the revenue streams don't begin until the twenty two, twenty three year and full implementation doesn't take place until the twenty five, twenty six year. Uh this was put on the ballot through a voter signature drive. Uh you can see the campaign fundraising to date for this initiative. Uh the Yes Campaign has raised. Forty two point nine billion and the No Campaign has raised twenty nine point nine million. Of note, the bigger contributors for the Yes Campaign are labor groups, C T A, S E I U and C F T. Have donated a combined amount of approximately twenty million dollars. Interesting on the Yes Campaign, uh there's a seven point one million dollar contribution. From Priscilla Chan and Mark Zuckerberg. And as you know, Mr. Zuckerberg is uh the owner and CEO of Facebook. Um on the No Campaign, uh the biggest contribution thus far comes from the California Business Roundtable. They have contributed about. Thirteen point nine million dollars. Next slide. As you can see in the next slide on the polling uh for this initiative of, there's been three polls taken of it. The Berkeley Institute for Governmental Studies show the support at forty nine percent. The Public Policy Institute of California shows a support level of fifty one percent. And this private research polling group, Provolski Research, which is a nonpartisan, but it's a, it's a private for-profit entity. That does polling. They show polling at support at forty point nine percent. So the average of the polls show about forty eight. Point four percent uh support with fifteen percent undecided. Uh so it's, it's a little bit close to call as to whether it it would pass if the election were held today. Next slide, on Proposition sixteen, uh this is the repeal of Proposition two oh nine. It would permit uh government decision-making. To consider race, sex, color, ethnicity, or national origin to address diversity issues. In contracting, hiring decisions, or in uh employment uh kinds of decisions or admissions decisions. It was placed on the ballot through legislation this year through um A C A five adopted by Assembly Member Weber. The campaign contribution levels are comparatively smaller than that of other additional campaigns. The Yes Campaign. Has raised about uh twelve and a half million dollars and the No Campaign has raised one million dollars. On the Yes Campaign, the the largest contributor was Quinn Delaney of fight, a five point five million dollar contribution. On the No Campaign, uh again, smaller levels of contributions. Uh there were Students for Fairness. They they have the largest single contribution. Uh that group has donated about fifty thousand dollars to the campaign. Next slide. On the polling for the initiative, uh there's two polls, uh the Berkeley Institute for Governmental Relation, Governmental Studies Campaign. And the Public Policy Institute of California um polling shows that the support is relatively low right now. Only thirty three percent support with twenty six percent undecided under the I T S survey. And the P P I C survey shows that the uh a similar level of support is uh is only at thirty one percent with twenty two percent undecided. So the average is about thirty two percent uh support levels with twenty four percent undecided. So. If we're, the election were held today, it didn't, it wouldn't look like uh that this initiative um would go through. So that's the information for the um the initiatives. And then David could just sort of talk about just a couple of the potential issues that were coming up for. Uh to expect for next year. And again, this is sort of um. Early predicting the future because we still haven't seen what the election looks like and what the outcomes would be. And what the federal stimulus will look like. But David, so it could give you a little crystal ball of what's upcoming to close, so.
Thank you. Um so again, as Dale mentioned earlier, um the uh COVID nineteen liability issues. Are going to hinge mostly on what goes on at the federal level. Whether it's action or inaction is going to determine how the state legislature, as well as the governor's office proceed, whether it's through. Legislation revisiting something similar to Assembly Bill seventeen fifty nine. Or going through the um budget process in trailer bill language. So again, that will uh very much hinge on federal action. In terms of uh the state budget deficit, uh like I had mentioned earlier briefly. Uh the state was facing a fifty four billion dollar deficit uh over the first um two years of the COVID nineteen outbreak. The very end of the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty fiscal year and the entirety of the two thousand twenty, twenty one fiscal year. The uh the legislature and governor ultimately had to make cuts and deferrals. However. Going forward, we don't anticipate the deferral um process being utilized as much as it was over these last two fiscal years. Uh and ultimately, if the California economy does not recover as well, uh then we may end up seeing some cuts. However, I I will note at this very moment, uh the California economy is increasingly strengthening. Over the last three months, uh or I guess the first three months of the twenty twenty, twenty twenty one fiscal year. Have produced significant gains over what was estimated in the twenty twenty Budget Act. At, as of October, um the beginning of October, we are about seven point two to seven point three billion dollars above those estimates. However, that is very much predicated on uh the pandemic outcomes over the next. Eight to ten months uh as we finish out the twenty twenty one fiscal year. Uh again, um the impact of the twenty twenty, twenty twenty one and twenty one, twenty two cuts on community college districts. Will determine, or will be determined by the economy. Uh and this is um. This is going to be one of the main focuses uh in terms of the budget process. As for the continuation of one-time solutions, um one of the things that we'll be keeping an eye on is how the PERS and STIRS employer contribution rates. Will be acted upon, uh given the state of the economy and whether or not uh further rate reductions will be necessary. And then continuing the uh or maintaining the fifty percent law. Um and the allowable uh uses of any uh funds that are authorized or that are spent on COVID nineteen related expenses. Making sure that those remain outside of that calculation, uh and then still focusing on the faculty obligation number issues. So that uh that concludes um our presentation.
Thank you, Dave. Thank you, Dale.
Do you have questions now for them before we go to the next one?
Great.
Do I have any trustees wishing to ask questions? Please raise your.
All right. Let me raise my.
Cause I can't see.
I just raised my hand.
There we go. Trustee Jamal.
I'll lower it. Thanks, Dale and David. Good, good to see you guys again. Um I had a question and maybe I'll bring in Elliot Stern. I don't know if it's related at all. You know, we had an issue with a liability issue in terms of our, with our nursing program doing placements at uh a U C hospital. Where U C refused to assume liability in the event that, unlikely, highly unlikely event that one of our students contracted COVID nineteen. Is this any way, so is, is this, is the legislation uh any way related to dealing with the situation like that or future legislation?
Yeah, so um, yeah, thank you, Trustee Jamal. Um, yeah, the the proposed legislation in the state legislature would have addressed that issue. But unfortunately, they closed the session, uh unable to resolve the issue. Secondly, um in your report from the federal level, I believe uh uh data will have an update. On how this uh issue is moving uh immediately for this year, but for the, we're um working on it for the next legislative session. To address this issue uh through legislation. And I believe Dana will give you an update on uh what's going on this year.
All right, um two more questions. How do we get this B A pilot off the ground? What, 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 what do we? What do we need to do to get this, get this done?
Oh, I think we got to start early um in the year and make sure that uh that we move the bill and gets out of. The committee process. The rules of, if you look at the the rules that were adopted in the Assembly. They were a little bit more flexible, flexible in moving pieces of legislation that were not COVID-related. So um starting off with Mr. Medina in the Assembly with the bill will have a better chance of moving through. Uh the, I think the buzzsaw that we ran into last year was that the Senate. I think the buzzsaw that we ran into last year was that the Senate was a little bit more rigid about letting through non-COVID-related activities. So I think by starting early on and getting getting momentum early in the first committee, I think will help a lot getting us out of the first committee.
So it just final questions though, related to that. It seems like, and maybe it won't make a difference because of the nature of higher education issues in the legislature, but it seems like we see you and David once a year. We have. You guys are wonderful. We we have a nice dinner and we do some visits and then we don't see you for another year. I know that in the interim, our whoever is the board president happens to be TJ, whoever it is, signs an occasional letter here and there. But is there more that we can do? Obviously, because of COVID nineteen, travel was essentially shut down. Also, it's an expense. We don't want to be utilizing travel when we can avoid it. But is is there more that, you know, we as trustees can do?
Well, yeah, I think through your legis setting your legislative agenda, you could have discussions about, number one, we could have more periodic updates if you're looking for that and briefing, so. You know, I know in other districts, we do presentations after the budget is introduced in January, and then we do an update in the May revision so that you you could sort of see where the the budget is going, engaging on key legislation. But I think as trustees, you you could discuss about how frequent you would like to have a touchstone with 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 us as as lobbyists and I don't expect that there'll be a person-to-person league conference in January, so we'll even miss out on the dinner. So so we might have to do, you know, a Zoom call or, you know, a Zoom Legislative Day with your delegation and with the key legislative people that we do normally in the face-to-face kind of mode.
Yeah, I agree. We should absolutely do that, and we probably will get more meetings via via Zoom and virtually than we would even in person. But I I'm just talking about in the interim period. I mean, I mean, in between January and I know you talked about updates from you to us. You can be honest, maybe our advocacy has has limited abilities. I'm talking about, you know, more active role for us as as elected trustees throughout the year.
So just, you know, one thing that, I guess, so Latisha and I worked pretty closely on, and I I think it was it kind of started out just as a very small idea, and we were trying to get it snowballing into something larger to work on with Senator Bates's office this last year. And it unfortunately, it happened quite literally the week before COVID became a real big issue. But I I think that, you know, even if we can get more traction-type action like that as members of the board, you know, find issues that we can elevate up to the Assembly members and the senators that are your representatives. You know, it even just bringing up as the ideas for us to take forward something, something like that, just as my my two cents of the of the possibilities.
All right. Thank you.
Trustee Adele.
Yes, I have a quick question for Dale. Dale, do we still have a problem with the UCs and the CSU's? Having a problem that community colleges in California have bachelor's programs? I I have I was amazed at a conference that I attended two weeks ago where community colleges in the Midwest and on the East Coast, they have not just one baccalaureate program for, let's say, nursing, but they have one for engineering. I I was I was most impressed, and here we have this problem in California. I know twenty years ago, when it started up in nursing, the state said that we could have one in in Southern California, and we thought Saddleback would get it, but it turned out to be San Diego. But then that was terminated because of the UCs and the USC's. Is that still a problem?
Yes, it is. The I expect even when we expand our the proposal that to expand the BA program just to one per college is going to get a lot of opposition from both CSU and UC. They believe that this is their territory and they are very siloed in what they they perceive their mission to be. So I I don't think they're going to be amenable to any kind of bill that promotes expansion of the program. Unfortunately, but that's where they are. They haven't moved from that position ever since the bill was signed. And I might add that there was a provision that was taken in the initial bill that said it couldn't be in the major that would intersect or interfere with what CSU or UC was doing. And as we, as the Board of Governors, community colleges approved the programs in the pilot, CSU challenged a couple of the programs that were up for approval. So they were fighting to the bitter end about what should be included, not included, even in the pilot program. So I could I would expect that that would continue.
Dale, is it that they have lobbyists or do they come themselves or do they have?
It's a it's a combination of both. They have lobbyists. They have a government relations team and staff, but there are a number of campus presidents that will also come and participate in the advocacy effort as well. So it's it's a wide-scale activity.
Thank you.
Okay, see no further hands. I'll go ahead and continue the presentation with federal.
Thank you for the time. We're kind of sad we aren't there. We always enjoy our time presenting. It's late here, so it's eleven PM, so bear with us if we do a yawn or two. We're going to try to move rather quickly through our presentation. You guys are familiar with us and who we are. We're your active voice and advocate for the district in Washington, DC. We provide frequent touch and high care. We engage with Congress, agencies, and the administration. A big part of our work is grants. We research programs. We understand requirements and agency priorities. We troubleshoot issues. For example, we work with both colleges to so to apply for waivers for eligibility for the minority-serving institution programs, which has been very beneficial to the colleges. We help to build relationships. For example, when President Stern met with Congressman Levin, Levin's staff contacted us and we provided an issue memo to staff and background information to President Stern. We position colleges. We position the colleges for success. We help build congressional support. We keep colleges, the colleges in the district, well-informed with useful information on DC activities. We provide a weekly update each Monday when Congress is in session. And after COVID, maybe it was in April, we added a weekly COVID update on Thursdays, given speed of change in activities. We help the colleges plan ahead to fill college priorities and identify new issues programs. For example, the Hispanic Serving Institutions Award that Saddleback got, which is three million over six hundred thousand a year for five years. We worked for about a year with Saddleback's excellent grants team led by Roxanne. We've engaged on the Annapese Work-Study Experimental Sites, which both colleges were selected for. We've supported Saddleback in the Department of Defense US Navy Community College Program, which I guess we're going to wait to meet the second round. There's the DOD Future Scholars Program and the DOL Strengthening Community College Grant. The IVC NASA MuRUP includes Planning Grant, which they're a partner with. We work in CTE and high-demand fields, pushing the college and 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 talking about your programs in IT pathways and cybersecurity. We examine, track, and recommend legislative positions. We draft and recommend legislative lessons and position the district and colleges as as expert. For example, offices called for clarification on CARES Act student funding formula, the full-time student equivalent versus total students. And this was the same issue that President Stern had a really powerful conversation with Congressman Levin on. We also started an associate scholars internship program where each semester we provide a paid internship to a district student. This year, we have Kenya Katonek, who is an IVC graduate who transferred to UCLA. We would really love to get more applications. We've had two IVC students, so we'd love to have a Saddleback student. The federal legislative priorities adopted were adopted in June of two thousand twenty from you all you know, and they included the Deferred Action for Childhood Arrival, DACA, Workforce for the Twenty-First Century, Higher Education Act Reauthorization, Veterans Affairs, and Apprenticeships. Proposed for two thousand twenty-one include COVID support, adoption, and recovery for students in colleges. We've been very engaged on this issue and alerted colleges of funding formulas and what each was giving through different programs, gave guidance on allowable expenses, and provided updates to our members in Congress and senators. They really appreciate learning how we are good stewards with the money and getting the funding out the door, which is really critical for another stimulus bill. Student visas. Another issue is student visas. DACA and international students. We're actively engaged on a timely manner, drafting and submitting letters and comments on guidance for both the district and the Orange County Community College Legislative Task Force, which you're heading now. This has been an issue that we've worked really been super engaged on for several months when the the Department of Homeland Security didn't want to have any international students if they weren't taking actual classes on campus. So we we engaged the, we wrote, we drafted letters. We worked closely with the colleges who provided excellent, timely information. And our example was even used from Senator Feinstein in a press release that her and Senator Harris did. So we're really working, and we got a a letter from Senator Feinstein thanking us. We're working. The other issues are, again, workforce for the Twenty-First Century, including apprenticeship and Veterans Affairs. We touched on some current activities, but grants where, as I mentioned, Hispanic-serving institutions, Annapese Works, Work-Study, Future Scholars and STEM. And both colleges are right now in the process of applying for Centers for Excellence and Veteran Student Success Program. We've been supporting their efforts, providing different instructions and evaluations on indirect rates that are allowable and whether to take and things to emphasize and doing general reviews of the grant narratives that they send it to the us on time. One thing that we've really stepped up this year is legislation. We're tracking a hundred and nine bills. The district, based upon our recommendation, has sent comments and supported eight bills dealing with COVID nineteen, Student Support Services, Veterans Pell Grant Expansion, Student Financial Aid, SALT. We've got three more bills that we've recommended that haven't been executed on. Some of the issues we're tracking include DACA, Workforce, the Higher Ed Authorization Veterans Programs, Student Support Services, COVID nineteen, and Police Reform, Black Lives Matters issues. Relationship building, we've been, we've really made a cognizant effort with our OC delegation, Federal Agency, and Grant Offices. The Orange County Community College Legislative Task Force. The district is the current chair. We've been, this has been a really busy few months. Issues that we've covered, drafted letters, include international student visas, COVID nineteen support, and we've been actively engaged on the UCI liability waivers. So we started, maybe it was it, we started several months ago, and we were told it was, we were engaging. We were told it was revolved resolved because we had to sign the waiver in order for our our students to get their placements. So when we learned that it was being brought up again for the spring semester, we last week sent a delegation letter to the OC delegation and have been working closely with Katie Porter's office. Her staff basically was really engaging on this, asking why it was necessary, who else is doing it? And it's my understanding that UCI just quit responding, and her staff was not super happy. So we sent the letter. It's my understanding that Katie Porter is planning to call over to UCI as well as the the district and as well as the the UC system to find out why this is happening, since that's the only institution that is requiring these increased waivers for two public institutions. We understand and have communicated that this is not a federal issue, but we felt that this was a way that doing nothing wasn't an option, so we felt that this was an avenue worth pursuing. We've also alerted early on, before anyone had really heard about it, the federal limitations on race, gender training. There was an OMB memo that came out restricting it, and no one, and we alerted the the district and the task force about this. And then in the first presidential debate, it was a question. And then OMB issued guidance. We've drafted some letters and comments to the guidance. And we're also working to try to put forward some best practices in first responder training so that we can position our colleges and as as the cutting edge of of kind of what we're doing to move the system forward. Now, I'll let, I know I went through in record speed. I'll let Amanda go ahead and talk about looking ahead.
Wonderful. Good evening, everybody. So looking ahead, a lot of this is obviously going to depend on the elections in three weeks. A couple, a little bit of context for the election. So so far, we've had thirty million individuals vote in early voting. By this time in the two thousand sixteen election, that number was five-point-nine million. So we're seeing certainly increased turnout at the national elections in early voting. But this is going to sorry, this is going to obviously impact what we see next year and what we see into the remaining of this year. So just provide some more details on each of these bullet points. So first, the one of the first actions that we'll see occur after the elections is finishing up the fiscal year twenty-one budget. So currently, the federal government is funded through a continuing resolution through the beginning of December. So that's going to be one of the first things that will happen when Congress reconvenes after the election. We're not anticipating a lot of changes in that budget, so it will likely be very similar funding levels as well as very similar programs to what we saw in the fiscal twenty-year budget, in the fiscal twenty budget. The timing will delay some grant solicitations slightly. So we have alerted the colleges to that fact. And much of the political debate will be around policy writers. So again, we're anticipating a very similar funding level as we've seen the last year. But the, you know, delays or debates will be around policy writers concerning the border wall, certain areas of healthcare funding, and depending on the results of some of the stimulus negotiations, how the stimulus negotiations for COVID, as well as those additional flexibilities around COVID, extend into that fiscal year twenty-one budget. So the next item that I want to talk about for looking ahead is So the next item that I want to talk about for looking ahead is obviously the continued impact of COVID and the stimulus negotiations. So the negotiations around the stimulus bill were set to resume today. They need to make some substantial progress by tomorrow or Wednesday for those negotiations to continue. To be perfectly frank, Dana and I are not particularly optimistic that we will see a stimulus bill passed before the election. So I would not count on that. We are anticipating that the stimulus bill negotiations will resume after the election. Some of the components that are the big negotiation points for that stimulus bill between primarily the Senate. And the House and the White House are the amount of state and local funding that might be available. That particular negotiation has a direct impact on California, given the way that the budget is structured for various contingencies. Funding deferments as well as cuts based on the addition or lack thereof of that federal aid. So same local funding is one of the big negotiation points. The liability issue continues to be a negotiation point. At the federal level, what they're proposing, what the Senate Republican version is proposing is a basic. Liability protection that would serve as a floor. So minimum liability protection that would apply to businesses. Education institutions, public institutions for some protection from liability and lawsuits related to COVID-19. Would also shift various jurisdictions into the federal court as opposed to the state court with those limitations. That is one of the main negotiation points. So we'll sort of see how that shakes out in the negotiations. I can tell you that for we've brought this issue up repeatedly with the Orange County delegation with our delegates specifically. And they are caught between a couple of different competing interests on this. So on the one hand, they've got public institutions such as South Orange Community College District as well as other K-12 districts. The employer side looking for liability protections, given the ramifications of having students back on campus and all those components. And then they've also got the employees via various faculty and teacher groups. Concerned about having liability waivers and ensuring that they are indeed protected if their institution. Does not act in accordance with local health guidelines. So just to give you a little bit of flavor for that negotiation. The last thing in the stimulus they did want to touch on in those negotiations is there does seem to be pretty broad agreement on the amount of funding that would be available for. Higher education institutions. So both the House and the Senate have proposed a total dollar amount of around $30 billion. The negotiation point is really about the way that those funds are distributed. So in the House, that would be distributed by student count. And in the Senate version, that would be distributed via FTE equivalent. And that obviously has a huge impact on the amount of funds received by the community colleges such as yourself. So that's for some of the stimulus negotiations. In addition on COVID, I did want to highlight that we'll continue to see policy discussions. Both in the stimulus bill as well as in other regulatory and department action. On different flexibilities and policies. So in so much as this is not resolved through administrative action. This may come up in policy provisions in the stimulus and in those areas we're seeing. Obviously continued discussion of how student visas should be treated for students that are attending fully remote. Or almost exclusively remote in the event that their college continues to be shut down for in-person education. Also, loan deferment is another area that is one of those continued flexibility negotiations as policy. As well as the different student support and aid programs around healthcare and. Access to food stamps, other sort of student support initiatives that right now are often under flexible qualification. As well as enrollment time periods because of the continued impact of COVID. So that's our COVID bullet. The next two bullets are really around this potential administration shift and. How the election will impact what we see in 2021 and going forward. So a couple of bullets on this one. So the very first thing that we're seeing at the end of 2020. And that we'll continue to see is last minute regulatory initiatives and pushes from the current administration. So those are in topics such as immigration and student visas. So one of those proposals that we've been working with the district to submit comments on is around long term modifications to how the Department of Homeland Security. Classifies issues and renews all international student visas. So shortening those timeframes, placing additional restrictions on it. And a variety of limitations on how a student can use their visa as well as that length of stay. We're also seeing last minute regulatory initiatives related to contractors. So specific to California. How an employee is classified as a contractor versus an employee. Air pollution, diversity training, as Dana mentioned. This issue with the executive order and we needed OMB guidance on how. Grantees can use federal funds for different types of diversity training related to race and gender. That's an initiative that will start to really roll out at the federal level around November 20. And how long that gets implemented and in what fashion will depend on the results of the election. Then the last piece that I wanted to highlight on this is around the census. So there have been a variety of court decisions around the census recently. In Orange County in California, the specific results of that census count. May end up in the reduction of a congressional district for Orange County or LA. It's kind of what they're anticipating. The specific count date that was allowed last week, based on the Supreme Court decision means that. President Trump will be able to execute a memo that he's proposed that would allow. Him to potentially exclude undocumented immigrants from the census count. That issue is now going to go before the Supreme Court in November. But obviously the how that gets reconciled and then what the count ends up being, if you end up with a significantly lower count. In California than you might otherwise have, then Orange County is one of those areas that could be impacted based on that congressional redistricting. That's some of that last minute regulatory push. What we're anticipating kind of like the differences between the election results. So if we do, if President Trump does indeed win a second term. As well as if the Senate remains in Republican control. From a higher education standpoint, much of the policies and priorities will be similar to the last four years. So that includes a focus on community colleges as a place for career and workforce training. And continued investment in that particular vision of the community college use. If Vice President Biden wins the election and also picks up a Democratic Senate. We're anticipating focus on tax reform that includes provisions of the state and local tax deduction. Some potential modest work on healthcare and then not necessarily for 2021 passage, but a focus on the HEA reauthorization in future years. Vice President Biden has proposed a variety of different initiatives around free community college, reducing student debt. Increasing support for minority serving institutions, including Hispanic serving institutions. And then also reforming aspects of the accreditation process and the for profit for profit college oversight. So we don't anticipate, you know, seeing all of those initiatives go forward, obviously. But should HEA reauthorization discussions pick up, particularly if there is single control of all three branches of government. And those are some of the proposals that we'd expect to see floating around. The very last thing, just on the fiscal year 2022 budget cycle. So that will start in around February or March. Obviously, the president at that time will set priorities based on their agenda as well as the. People that they've appointed at that point. And that will impact, you know, everything from the amount of funding that's proposed in the grant programs. To the specific priorities that the grant programs are pursuing. So with that, I will close it up and we are happy to take questions.
Trustee Melchior.
Yeah, I want to thank both our teams, both our federal team and our state team. For all you work with our legislators, the legislators in Sacramento and the legislators in Washington DC. And particularly all of you work working with us while our district is the chair of the Orange County Community College Legislative Task Force. Because it's a very important organization that combines all four community colleges. So this all the community college students in Orange County. So we have a very powerful voice with our legislators. So I really do want to thank you for that. I can't mention everything in my two minute board report. About what we do in the in the task force because I actually time it and make sure I keep it within two minutes. So. I could only mention a few things like I did mention today, the nursing clinical problem that we're having with UCI right now. And we're working in that. If you have anything else to say about that, we'd be happy to hear you. So I generally just want to thank you and also I want to also advocate as as Tim Jamal said, as trustee Jamal said. That legislators listen to other legislators. So if there's an important legislative issue, you should utilize the trustees to work with the legislators. Because they were elected officials and they're elected officials and they will listen to us. And I've seen it over and over and over again, over the years. So don't hesitate to ask the board members to 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 contact our legislators. If we have a certain legislative issue that we really need to solve. Thanks.
Amanda and Dana, thank you. I know it's late. We were kind of cruel to you, putting you second. You probably should have gone first. Given the time zone difference. Do you think that the issue of industry apprenticeships is going to be a priority regardless of who wins the presidency?
That's a great question. We think that the issue of apprenticeships will be a priority regardless of who wins the presidency. What we anticipate seeing is a different focus based on the the outcome. So if. President Trump wins a second term, we anticipate a continued focus on that industry centered, industry recognized apprenticeship program. So those eye wraps that the Department of Labor is now starting to actually roll out. If Biden wins the presidency, we anticipate a focus on sort of the traditional apprenticeship tracks that we've been seeing. So.
Registered apprenticeships.
Yes, yes, the registered apprenticeship program. So those tend to be more union focused apprenticeships. Because of his commitment and focus on increasing diversity in those registered apprenticeships, we would anticipate seeing increased investment in. Getting traditionally underrepresented groups into those programs. So women and minorities, veterans, etc. But we would anticipate that funding going through that registered apprenticeship program as opposed to that alternative. Industry recognized apprenticeship program.
Okay, thanks for that. And I guess back to Dana. Your predictions have not been right so far on on the salt deductions being reinstated. So I what is the prognosis of that? I think I know what will happen. Well, go ahead. What do you think of? I guess it depends on the Senate and the presidency.
Yeah, but but can you hear me?
Yes.
We 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 continue to believe that that is going to come back, the salt deductions. There are several bills that have been moving through Congress with various members on both sides of the aisle, mainly from New Jersey, California. Those high income tax states. And it's just going to be a matter of time before that changes. And Amanda touched on that in her presentation is that, you know, we see some tax reform coming. I think many people believe that the Trump tax reform really didn't do what it was set out to do for many individuals. So I and and quite honestly, with any administration will see some change on that. But but I continue, Tim, to predict that we will see the salt be. The salt tax be fixed before I die.
That's a major shift from when you.
No, no.
Half century.
No, I think in the I think it's it's gonna happen in the next couple of years. I or it could happen next year. I think there's been it never died and there's been significant movement by. And if you recall, the first stimulus bills included that in 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 the bill. And it was taken out in negotiations because that's something that's really impacting the livelihood of many families. And I want to touch base on on meetings. What we've been doing a good amount of is virtual meetings. Meetings where we we do work with agency program directors or on 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 virtual meetings. And and they're actually proving very effective. And it's especially good when people show their pictures. Because then you get the feel of a meeting. They're more hard to manage when people are just on the phone. Because you kind of can't tell when someone wants to talk and you lose some of the context. But but that's something that we have been engaging and 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 working on and and holding.
Just to quickly reiterate, so you know, as Dana said, the salt fix was included in the HEROES Act. So. There's strong support in the House currently to fix that. They tied it to COVID relief specifically, both, you know. Because of the impact that 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 the loss of that deduction has on states that are really impacted by COVID. So. You know, we'll see that come up in the negotiations around COVID stimulus. You know, it kind of depends on how this election is going to shake out. And then. Just kind of piggybacking on kind of this idea of how trustees can help. Really with this messaging and with encouraging some of these federal activities. We're finding that the narrative around the use of the emergency funds as well as the impact of. Both the pandemic and just standard grant programs have on community colleges is really getting lost in DC. And we think that that's a way that that's something that the trustees specifically could be really impactful on locally. Is talking about how you're using these funds, how quickly you're using these funds. The benefit that it's having for your students and your college. I mean, the talking point that kept circulating here in the summer was that only 5%. Of the education emergency funds was being used. So why would we have to reauthorize anymore? And working with both of the colleges and the chancellor with her leadership, we were able to very quickly demonstrate that the district and the colleges had spent. You know, more than 50% of the student centered funds already after only a month and a half, two months of those funds. And that was incredibly impactful for our delegation. So, you know, talking about how important these programs are and how impactful this is. On your community locally, you know, through things like the Local Public Access Channel interview that you mentioned, trustee Jamal is can be really impactful.
Yeah. Oh, thank you. I know Ethan has a question. My last question is, did I hear you say that? Orange County might lose a congressional seat?
That is one of the potential projections if California's numbers go too far down in the current census count. It's either going to be Orange County or LA County or potentially Eastern San Francisco Bay Area.
All right. Thank you. Thank you both.
Trustee Manafi.
All right. So I think for the presentation and.
All right, so I think for the presentation, and could you explain them more, what would happen if President Trump decides to exclude undocumented students? But then Vice President Joe Biden actually wins the election? Like, what are the options? Could President, could Vice President Joe Biden, like, university decision?
Yeah, that's a great question. It kind of depends how the action is undertaken. So the regulatory pushes that the current administration are making, Congress could choose to reverse many of those. So that's through a congressional resolution. President, when, a lot of that actually happened in 2017, after the flips there. So there's a lot of precedent for that. Some of the executive orders that President Trump has decided to use specifically on immigration matters, those could be reversed almost immediately, because there's no regulatory process that's really just about the administrative action. So it depends a bit on what vehicle is used. The census pieces on the exclusion, the potential exclusion of undocumented immigrants, that one is much harder to undo, because of the way that the deadlines interact with those statutory counts. So we're really kind of depending on the Supreme Court hearing the issue at the end of November, to see if the president would be allowed to do that. And that would be more, much more challenging to reverse, again, depending on how the Supreme Court decision is made.
Let's say Democrats vote between the Congress and the Senate. It would be kind of impossible to reverse the decision of the president excluding undocumented students from the census, right?
Yes, it would be very challenging because of the timing of how this works.
And one thing we want to, can you hear me?
Yes.
And one thing we want to remember regarding the census counts is, is I think everyone is fully expecting a far lesser count of undocumented individuals than what really exists there, because there was the fear factor. And there was much, much hesitation to actually send in your census, because you're kind of found more. And so many people believe that a lot of the damage was already done. So, and the census is a very powerful count that, you know, is there for 10 years. So as Amanda said, that's going to be really hard to undo in actual counting census like that. I just don't see that happening. But there are some things regarding undocumented students and international, undocumented individuals in students and international students that can be done. One thing is, President Trump has been very active in executive orders. And as Amanda said, I think he has like the second, and the second most of any president in the United States. And one, and much of them that he's done are really political and for publicity in nature. But as Amanda said, one thing that can be done is, is they can be undone rather quickly. And I would fully expect the, if Biden wins, the transition team is already working about reversing them.
All right, thanks so much.
Okay, seeing no further requests to speak. Just making sure, I assume you guys got the word that I planned a trip out there during a time where I don't have to do anything. Thanksgiving break.
Go ahead, Dana.
But you need to know that most things aren't open.
I know.
Okay.
Yeah, the federal employees are still not back in the offices, and Congress is still closed, so.
Oh darn.
And even for fun, the museums and stuff, we'll take a look. Some of them have reopened a little bit, and you have to get tickets in advance. But many of them remain closed.
We're actually out there to see friends and tour some non-traditionally touristy places we're gonna go.
Well, we would rather see you than be off the hook, so. And you know, you just want to torture us, because you know how we like to drag folks around in meetings.
Yes. Trustee Lang.
Yes, just very quickly, really for trustee Jamal's benefit. Don't also forget that the existing SALT law has a current sunset date of, I think it's 2025. So Ms. DeBomat may not have to live all that long to see her prediction come true.
Good point, Dave. Good point.
Thank you for the backup.
Nice hedged bet. All right, well, thank you so much for your time, and go get some sleep.
Thank you.
All right, so next order of business is the consent calendar. Do I have any polls?
Five point two.
Five point two, any others? Oh yeah, five point two, that's probably a good one. Thanks, Jane. Thanks, trustee. All right, I'll entertain a motion for the balance of the consent calendar. All right, so I got a few moves. So I'm going to give trustee Lang the motion and trustee Wright the second. See no hands up for discussion? I will ask for the roll call.
Trustee Day.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Lang.
Aye.
Trustee Melchker.
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Trustee Whit Riddell.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
Trustee Monapi.
Aye.
Okay. And so Chancellor Burke, do you have a summarized readout on five point two?
I can just read the resolve. The summary is here. A resolution passed by the South Orange County Community College District will declare October 19th to the 23rd, 2020, and every third week of October thereafter as Undocumented Student Action Week. To work in partnership with other organizations, the California Community Colleges, and the Community College League of California to engage in activities supporting undocumented students. Additionally, the resolution will urge congressional members to uphold California values and create a pathway to citizenship for undocumented students, which will permit them to complete their educational goals and achieve their highest potential.
Move approval.
Got a motion from trustee. Second from trustee Day. So seeing no requests to speak on the item, we'll go ahead and call the vote.
Trustee Day.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Lang.
Aye.
Trustee Melchker.
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Trustee Whit Riddell.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
Trustee Monapi.
Aye.
Okay, so knowing what work we have ahead, I will entertain a motion to extend the meeting with the addition of a break.
Move approval.
Second.
Well, I need to know how long you are approving or motioning the break for and the extension.
One hour.
Yep.
One hour. Is that the break or the extension?
Maybe five-minute break, maybe.
Yeah, one hour with a five-minute break.
One hour with a five-minute break, okay. So I have a motion and a second. We'll go ahead and vote on the extension.
What, how long are we extending it to, please?
From nine o'clock for one hour.
No, it's quarter of noon, isn't it?
Right, but I'm extending it from nine, since our meeting would normally go to nine.
Okay, so ten. Trustee Day.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye, aye.
Trustee Lang.
Aye.
Trustee Melchker.
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Trustee Whit Riddell.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
Trustee Monapi.
Aye.
Okay, so it is 8:47. We will resume at 8:52. All right, so we're back. If I can remind trustees to go ahead and mute their microphones, that would be helpful. We're going to start with 6.1. So about College Science and Math Building Reconstruction Project.
So move.
I have a motion from trustee Jamal.
Second.
Second from trustee Riddell. And do I have any requests to speak or any information from staff?
This is trustee Wright. I just wanted to comment. I spent 18 years in that building, and it needs to go.
I was gonna-
Trustee Melchker.
Yeah, I was gonna say that, I don't know if people, if it's really, if it explains it well enough, but this, this funding for the architect is for the demolition of the current math-science building, and also the construction of the new, smaller math-science building. And as trustee Wright said, it was a very odd building. The only two nice things about the building were they had two, like, kind of amphitheaters that are used all the time for science-math lectures and the science-math clubs. So I would hope in the new building, they would create some large amphitheaters for the use of these clubs to have science experts come in and discuss it with the science students.
Yeah, my first tour, when I was elected in 2010, Saddleback, was led by some professor or dean, James Wright somebody.
Yes.
And it was raining as we were in the tour, and he got to show me the flooding going down the stairs.
Right.
And he couldn't get into one of those auditoriums, because the door had swelled shut.
Oh no.
Yeah, I think, and that was 10 years ago, so it's, can't have gotten better since. So, yes, all right, so we'll go ahead and call the vote.
Trustee Day.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Lang.
Aye.
Trustee Melchker.
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
A loud yes.
It took so long. Why did it take so long?
To the trustee Monapi.
Aye.
All right, motion carries.
Way to go.
Trustee vote. 6.2, War Contract for Consultancy Service for the Technology Master and Strategic Plan Development.
Move approval.
I second it.
Motion from trustee Lang, second from trustee Jay. Any requests to speak or questions or any information from staff? Then we'll go ahead and call the vote.
Trustee Day.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Lang.
Aye.
Trustee Melchker.
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
Student trustee Monapi.
Aye.
All right, motion carries with unanimous, and a student trustee, yes. Okay, 6.3. Amendment number two to the office lease for Crown Valley Financial Plaza between Reef Crown Valley and SOCCCD.
So moved.
I second it.
Motion from trustee Wright, second from trustee Jay.
No, no, wait a second. Are we going to have discussion?
Yeah.
Yeah. Trustee Melchker.
Yeah, I've actually asked a lot of my questions before. Chancellor Burke and Vice Chancellor Viscachill helped me on a lot of these issues. But apparently, they really do need this, what I was told, to lease this land, to lease these office buildings off-site from the college campus. And after the pandemic, they're planning on bringing, looking into bringing the people back to the Saddleback College campus and letting the lease go. So that was what I understood is happening.
That was, that's news to me. That's, that's not what I heard, but go ahead.
Okay, trustee Jamal, I guess.
Let trustee Whit go, she was before me.
Well, okay, I'm just going by hands in the chat.
Yeah.
Um, I, then I need to know some more information. I thought we would have a discussion on this. I know.
What we're doing.
Well, I understand that, but some people have already gotten their questions answered. And I wanted to drive by there today, just to see how many people were there. And I have questions such as, in the last month, how many classes were offered in that building?
It's not.
It's, yeah, it's a district office building. It's not classes.
It's not classes.
I'm not talking about classes for students. I'm talking about classes for district and our employees.
Okay.
And I just need to know, 7,000 square feet, and how many people are in there per day?
There are 30, there are 33 people.
Are your people in there?
Where did you get that, Jim?
Currently, we are teleworking, and so the two district employees that are typically housed there are teleworking, just like all other district employees. We do have some program and construction managers that are housed there. There are six of them that are housed there. They will come in periodically, as needed. And then we are planning to move 15 district information technology employees there once we go back to work. So overall, we would have a total of, is that 20, 22 employees there? 23 employees would be working there. We have not held any on-ground training due to the pandemic, but we typically do hold them there. We also conduct interviews there for various positions. When we don't have enough space, we will hold interviews over there.
Have you thought about using the space that we have at ATEP?
So there isn't space at ATEP that would house the 23 people that are going to be there. With, you know, most of ATEP is classrooms. There is one suite that is dedicated to employees. And, you know, that is partially filled, it's not completely filled, but it wouldn't, it's not big enough to house everybody that needs to go over there.
Are we getting any kind of a discount on renting the office space because of the pandemic? Because I'm just asking.
So we, we did do comps with other area, or with other space around the area, and this is the cheapest that we could find. And we did negotiate it down even further from what they had originally asked. If you see and look in the lease agreement, the first six are without any payment. And so the lease payments do not begin until July 1st of 2021.
Trustee Jamal.
Yeah, so this came up on the officer call. But trustee Melchker said something that confuses me. We're getting this, that after the COVID-19 restrictions are lifted, then we're no longer going to need this space? Is that what you said, trustee Melchker?
I believe that, maybe Chancellor Burke could expound on it. I believe that's what she said to me. Yeah, maybe, or she texted to me. I mean, she emailed- Yeah, maybe, or she, he texted to me. Uh, I mean, she emailed, she answered my questions with emails. I did look again and to see exactly what she said, but that's what I recall, what her, what her answer was to my email.
Okay, I didn't know that, I didn't know that. Is that, is that the case?
Chancellor Burke, is that?
So we would always reassess our need for additional space, and a good deal of it will, will be determined based on whether or not we return everybody to working full-time. If we do, we need the space. If we don't, there may be some flexibility.
Um, I don't, I don't understand.
The plan right now, sorry, I was just gonna say, the plan right now is that we need the space. And so that's why we went and negotiated with the landlord to continue the lease um, that we've brought forward to you. I think once we get back, um, from the pandemic and we're back working in the offices, we'll have to see how our normal is going to be a new normal and what is going to change, and whether or not we will continue to have employees teleworking or if all employees will be back. We do know that we do not have the space for these employees at either of the campuses, and so that was why we went forward with the lease to continue the lease.
Trustee Lang.
Okay, just one more thing. So these are all HR, HR and payroll people? Employees?
No, they are, we have-
Abilities and, uh, and IT.
I didn't hear you.
Ability and information technology.
Okay, and our, what's our commitment if we don't need it? We have to, is it a three-year commitment or what, what's the?
Sixty-six months.
It's a five-year lease. Um, and I think after, I'm trying to find the termination clause. So we're committed for three years.
Page seventeen.
Okay. All right. Off, over to you, trustee Lang.
Okay, yeah, yes, I, I, I think this frankly would have probably been a, um, a good one, since it sounds like all of us had questions that we separately asked, uh, the, you know, um, uh, the chancellor and vice chancellor about, uh, to have maybe a little bit more robust information or reasoning in here as to why we needed it. It certainly bothered me that we were looking at a, uh, an extending a, a lease that started in two thousand seventeen. Um, and I thought, thought at that time was intended to be sort of a short-term stopgap type of situation. And now, you know, it looks like we're gonna be extending it for, uh, as long as perhaps another five-year period. And obviously, we probably right at this moment do have space available uh, almost everywhere because of the pandemic. Um, but because of the uncertainty of the situation, we just don't know when students are gonna be back. Um, and that space won't be available any longer. So, you know, it, uh, for all those reasons, it made sense, it seemed to me to, um, uh, you know, prove the, uh, administration's recommendation.
All right.
Now, one of the reasons that we negotiated the first six months free was because we were teleworking.
Makes sense.
And so we, we really won't be paying any lease payments while we're teleworking, uh, January through June.
Okay, trustee Riddell.
If I remember correctly, um, in discussions, uh, with, um, President Stern and what we were forecasting, I mean, obviously it changes sometimes by the day, but it's possible that we will be doing our online until two thousand twenty-two. Because we may be dark in the classrooms all next year. We don't know that. And I believe that there, we have a lot of gray area, even though we're gonna have six months free rent, we can't say, okay, we'll sign the contract and then we have six months free rent and decide, oh, we don't want it. Um, I, I, I just think it's a lot of money, thirteen thousand a month for half of next year, and then after that, almost fourteen thousand a month for a, um, a location that we still have so much gray area. We don't know. I can't predict it. We, we, none of us can. It might be a good deal, but I think we're wasting money.
Well, I, I mean, I'm kind of with trustee Lang on this one in that, you know, we, we voted for it in two thousand seventeen and didn't have this much consternation about it. And the idea that we don't have anywhere to put these people, and we don't certainly want to extend the funds to build a building for them. I, I'm not sure what your solution is of where else to put these people.
Well, for, right now, TJ, is that we don't need to put anybody anywhere because we're working from home. And again, it's a gray area for a year and maybe a year and a half. And if we need it, then we will get a facility.
I mean, some of us are a little more optimistic that June isn't that far off. I, I don't know, I-
Yeah, I think this is a bigger question. We're not gonna solve it tonight. It has to do with the level of communication. The board has been provided on this and the rationale and you're no, the whole of, and the need for a space like this and the kind of personnel and does it fit into our five-year plan? I mean, I don't have answers to any of those questions, and we're not gonna answer them tonight, unfortunately. So. It's not just that issue, TJ. It's not as narrow as you're portraying it. You're portraying it pretty narrowly. It's a little bit bigger than that, I think, some of the concerns. But it's on the agenda. It's been voted in se-, it's been motioned in second, and that's it.
Anybody else? Okay, we'll go ahead and call the vote.
Trustee J.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Reluctantly, aye.
Trustee Lang.
Aye.
Trustee Melchiker.
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Trustee Riddell.
No.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
Student trustee Monapi.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries on a six to one vote and a student trustee yes vote. Six point four, approval of Saddleback College parking lot license to use.
I, I move it. So moved.
Motion from trustee Jamal.
Second.
Second from trustee Wright.
Yeah.
Okay. Any requests to speak on the issue, question? Uh, trustee Lang.
Okay, so this one was another one that was a little odd, I thought, because we don't really know who the tenant is or what they're gonna be using the space for, although we think we know who it is. Um, and I had a bunch of questions in terms of, you know, how it may impact things. Um, if in fact there were to be any overlap. I don't think it's anticipated there would be overlap between their use of our parking and when our students would be back on campus, which would be of concern to me. Um, and, um, so I, I, I did have a few questions about this one, too.
Okay, did you get your questions answered or you wanna ask them now?
Um, uh, sort of. Sort of. I, I, again, I, I, I think, uh, trustee Jamal said it best. I will probably support this reluctantly.
Okay. Anybody else? Trustee-
I-
Trustee Riddell.
Um, I think it's wonderful that we can, um, we can earn money in a very difficult situation, and whoever came up with this idea, I think it's great. The only thing I have a problem with is, um, reading this, you know, I had lots of questions. The agreements are good, but it doesn't explain anything. So if it's possible, I would like, for myself, I would like to know more about what I'm gonna vote for. And I'm just concerned, so someone tell me, is there any liability issue in doing this? Because to me, that's the most important thing right now. That would be the consequences.
Okay, I have a, I have a request to speak from, uh, Dr. Stern. Is this to answer that question?
Great.
Sure. So, uh, vice chancellor Gable or the chancellor may pipe in. Um, but I would say as to trustee Riddell's question, there is complete, uh, defense and indemnification, so liability should not be an issue. Um, Priya is a very strong negotiator and is very careful about those sorts of things. I do want to tack back just a couple feet and answer trust, trustee Lang's, uh, initial question about scheduling. I want to be really clear that this is two of our parking lots, not all of our parking, and the, uh, commitment in the initial ground lease goes only and through the end of July. So we are sure because of the emergency order, uh, that chancellor Burke has issued, uh, that we will not be having demand for that parking lot through spring term. And summer was already almost all online this past year, so we're very confident that we could meet any demand uh, for summer with the existing lots, which will have been repaid by then. And then, of course, for fall, uh, we're free to get out of this lease if we need our parking lots back.
Thank you, President Stern.
Uh, trustee Melchiker.
Yeah, one question I, I, um, I did, is a huge list of questions I emailed, uh, to chancellor Burke. Um, um, was I, I wasn't sure what the company was that is, I mean, I think it's a great idea. It's very entrepreneurial to, to, uh, lease out, two of our parking lots, um, and e- enable us to, uh, gain a great deal of money to, to help our colleges, which have so many incredible needs because of the pandemic, and our students have so many incredible needs. And, um, and, you know, until July, and, and we're not gonna be offering classes through, um, through the spring semester, and then summer is a smaller semester, so I think we could do without two parking lots, and I'm, I'm sure that you, uh, have looked into that. But you, I don't think she was a- able to answer me who exactly is leasing it, and, and I, she said there'll be a number of vans, but what company is leasing it? I want to make sure it's-
Marsha, Marsha, I'm gonna have to, I'm gonna have to stop you. There's an NDA. You, you, you're, chancellor Burke can answer that.
What, what, there's a what?
We, we can't sign an NDA because, uh, because we're a public agency.
What is an NDA? Say that again.
Non-disclosure agreement.
So there's a non-disclosure agreement with-
There, there's not a technical NDA, because like she said, we can't sign one, but we're really not. I don't know, she can explain it.
Yeah, yeah. Well, my question is, I understand that, but we're apparently not able to determine who is going to be using the parking lot until after the, um, the agreement is executed, and it, it made me pause a little bit. You know, I wonder who it is. That's, that's rented.
Go to the exhibit to page ten and look at the large paragraph under the letter E, you will find a name.
So, so if I could chime in, well, um, I, I really, I commend Saddleback for being creative on this, um, and very inventive and generating revenue during a time of the pandemic when there are so many challenges and revenue reductions, so, um, it is a short-term agreement. I don't see it any conflicting with students, of course, if it did. I don't think Saddleback would do that, so, um, good work.
Okay. Seeing no further requests to speak, we'll go ahead and vote on the item.
Trustee J.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Lang.
Aye.
Trustee Melchiker.
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Trustee Riddell.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
Student trustee Monapi.
Aye.
Okay, six point five.
So moved.
Better get out of the gentleman's-
Second.
Motion trustee Jamal, second from trustee Wright, board calls-
Isn't this information only?
This is review and study.
Review and study.
So you're accepting them for review and study?
I'm, I'm good to accept for review and study.
Thank you.
Any questions on any of these?
Oh. Scoot, yes. Um, I'm sorry, we're on six point five, right? Yes. Okay, um, I guess exhibit B, page one of one. Uh, institutional planning. So, I just want to be clear. I had some questions, but in the review and study, is it gonna come back where we can ask the questions for its final say or?
Oh, you can do it now or then?
Okay, when it talks about, um, student equity plans, I mean, do we have student equity plans?
Yeah, yeah. We're required to complete student equity plans in order to qualify for the student equity and achievement uh, program funding. And so that is a plan that each of the colleges, uh, complete and evaluate and review.
And present to us.
Okay, be, yes, because I didn't want to vote for something that I hadn't seen before, and it's already put in the board policy. You know, what came first?
It's a required plan.
It's, this board policy is listing several of the plans that we're required to do. It's not an exhaustive list, but it is some of the main plans.
Okay, yeah, I can, yeah, all right. Okay, and then, uh, go to, uh, forty-two thirty-five. Are we there yet? Exhibit E?
Yes.
Okay, credit for prior learning. And then I know later on, credit by exam is, is wiped out. Um, back twenty-five years ago, maybe thirty years ago, for me, I did the credit by exams because that was my task, except for OB. And what we have here, it says authorized, pass an authorized assessment. So I just want to be clear, what we're saying is an authorized, who's authorizing the assessment? The faculty? Or, I, I just want to know what you mean by that.
Yeah, everything would either be driven by code or by curriculum, and so what this is saying, it's kind of bringing the assessments all under one umbrella, but then it's adding the new credit for prior learning that is really stemmed from wanting to give credit to the veterans who are coming back to school and giving them credit for what they learned while they were in the military. But this includes the standardized exams, the CLIF exams or AP exams, um, as well as anything else, and a student would not be given it until the appropriate, um, academic program reviewed it and ensured that the student met the curriculum needs and the learning objectives for the particular course before they would be given any credit.
Okay, I understand, and, and I have to agree with all that. Excuse me, especially, I'm, I'm, the biggest one here is the military service training. That is the strongest one that I can see, because in my own experience is that after Vietnam, when I worked with, um, excuse me, the medics that came from Vietnam and worked with me in ICU, they were phenomenal, and um, even one of them went and took the RN exam and passed, and then the BRN figured it out. Oh my goodness, he never even went to nursing school. So I just wanted to say, I really, I really support this one. I have a little problem, International Baccalaureate College Board, I know you have to have that for the, uh, for my experience, for the nurses that came from Iran, et cetera, that- that the International, um, College Board did review their tests. But I just hoping that all faculty know that they just review points and, um, objectives, the standard objectives. And we have to do some kind of testing, especially in our specific areas such as nursing, because they may have this, uh, pass with 75%, which is acceptable, but they have to do some type of clinical practice. Now, mental health, they'll have to always do. But I just wanted to stress that because it's so important, because I'm talking about lives. I do have a problem with student-created portfolios. I really do have a serious problem with that one. You know, is the teacher going to be responsible for looking up all the, all the information? I mean, what's the validity that the student writes this? I'm asking the question.
Well, I don't believe, you know, a portfolio would be acceptable in those disciplines that typically use portfolios. So it wouldn't be something that would necessarily be applied across all, across all disciplines, because this is going to be decided by the faculty in those disciplines. So a portfolio is just one option among the options for credit by, for prior learning. But a portfolio would be perfectly acceptable in, in our discipline.
Okay, I didn't think about that. Okay. I'll accept that, good. Okay, can we move on to 5210? Okay. Um, I just would like, when it says that the chancellor shall establish regulations necessary to ensure cooperation with local public health officials, et cetera. I would just like if we could just add in there that the chancellor will establish these regulations with the direction or guidance from our public health contact. Um, uh, or from California Department of Public Health. Um, with, you say local public health officials, but somebody from our campus needs to deal with them. Because Chancellor Burke, I'm not trying to say anything negative here, but I don't know if you know all those public health regu- regulations. And, um, I think we should have it in writing. I'm sure it would be reviewed, but I think it should be in writing, something in there that you would do it with, with. I, again, I'm a nurse. So, um, if you could have some type of, um, some type of information, some types, some words that identify that you're going to do it with someone on our campus, on our campuses.
Right, so Trustee Rydel, so this is, this is indicating that the chancellor is going to establish the regulations. When you look at the regulation, that's where we get into scale of who is doing it. And the regulation in this particular instance is the, um, the dean at Saddleback College that oversees the health center. And then for IVC, it's the assistant dean that oversees the health center. So they are both intimately involved in the regulation regarding the communicable diseases. And we do lay out who they work with and it's, you know, the Orange County Department that they're working with. And all that specificity is there in the regulation itself.
Right. So this is you telling the chancellor to make sure that a policy, that, that a regulation exists that take into account all of the public health information, regardless of what that chancellor's background is. So it's just the board directing the chancellor to go out and get the expertise.
Okay. I hope you can see where I was coming from when I read that. Okay. I don't have any more questions.
Trustee Lang.
Yes, I have, um, one suggested, uh, sort of picky, um, wording change on 7110. That's Exhibit C. And what I would like to do is strike the last sentence and have the sentence before that read. All actions to employ and all employment transactions shall be reported to the Board of Trustees at its next regular meeting and contingent upon approval or ratification by the Board of Trustees.
Can you say that again, Dave? What do you want to do? So I just pulled it up.
I want to, I want to strike the last sentence.
Okay.
And the, have the sentence before that read, and I'll repeat.
So replacing the current sentence before that?
That, that's, right, by adding on to the ending of the previous sentence.
Okay.
Um, and after the word "meeting," it would say, "and are contingent upon approval or ratification by the Board of Trustees."
Sounds fine to me. I mean, our policy, our board policy committee looked at this, but I think that's fine.
Okay. To me, to me, it otherwise read a little awkwardly.
Yeah. Terry or Bobby, you're on the committee.
No, I like what David said, very much so. And just strike the last sentence.
Did staff get that or do you need him to email it to you?
I got it.
Okay, thank you. Again, that's just a suggestion.
All right. Seeing no other requests to speak, we'll go ahead and vote to, uh, accept for review and study.
Um, I didn't get a motion or a second.
Yeah, we got one from Trustee Jamal and.
Yep.
A second from.
Lang, I think.
Well, I think they were looking.
Oh, whatever.
So I, I, as the maker of the motion, I accept the amendatory language.
Trustee Jay.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Lang.
Aye.
Trustee Melchker.
Aye, aye.
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Trustee Rydel.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
And Trustee Monacy.
Aye.
Okay, unanimous with a student trustee yes vote. On the 6.6, board policies to accept.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion from Trustee Lang, second from Trustee Jamal. Any requests? Discussing. We'll go ahead and vote on the item.
Trustee Jay.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Lang.
Aye.
Melchker.
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Trustee Rydel.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
And Trustee Monacy.
Aye.
Unanimous vote with a student trustee yes vote. We are now on board agenda item 6.7 regarding a public hearing on the SOC CCD Faculty Association Initial Proposal to the District. Before we hold the public hearing, Vice Chancellor Cindy Viskachil will provide an introduction.
Thank you, thank you, President Prendergast. The board will conduct a public hearing to provide an opportunity for the public to comment on the Faculty Association's initial proposal to the district. If the board has any questions throughout this public hearing process, I'm here to assist.
Does the board have any questions for staff to assist with their understanding of this matter? Seeing none. Board item 6.7, the public hearing on the matter at hand is now open. Public comments are not to exceed two minutes. Do I have any public comments?
No comments, no, there are none.
All right. Public hearing is now closed. If there are any further discussion on this matter by the Board of Trustees. Okay, item 6.7 is concluded. The board will vote on the adoption of the Faculty Association Initial Proposal to the District on Agenda Item 6.8.
So moved.
Second.
A motion from Trustee Jamal, second from Trustee Rydel.
Question.
Trustee Lang.
Are we, I assume we are voting on acceptance of their initial proposal.
That is correct, Trustee Lang.
Okay, because that's not really what it says. Talks about approving it rather than accepting it. That's what concerns me.
Well, yeah, and it's missing a preface.
We can approve their proposal, I think, I think that's okay. We'll.
So you're, what you're doing is you're, you're approving that they have opened those articles for us to be able to negotiate them.
Okay.
You're not approving what they're asking for, you're just approving.
Well, that's my, that's my concern. I just want to make sure that it's very clear that we're accepting, um, their proposal.
You are not approving their proposal. You are approving the process whereby their proposal is, uh, brought forward for the public to review. And then the board votes to essentially accept and approve, uh, approve the process that the board then accepts their proposal. And, uh, then it'll come, this is the final hearing. And then negotiations can start next month. And the next one item will do the similar thing for the district's proposal. So you're simply accepting those proposals and opening and closing a public hearing as required by law.
I'll accept your interpretation.
Thank you, Trustee Lang.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and vote on the item.
Trustee Jay.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Lang.
Aye.
Trustee Melchker.
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Trustee Rydel.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
And Trustee Monacy.
Aye.
Okay, we have a unanimous yes vote and student trustee yes vote. We are now on board agenda item 6.9 regarding a public hearing on the district's initial proposal to the South Orange County Community College District Faculty Association. Before we hold the public hearing, Vice Chancellor Cindy Viskachil will provide an introduction.
Thank you, President Prendergast. The board will conduct a public hearing to provide an opportunity for the public to comment on the district's initial proposal to the Faculty Association. If the board has any questions throughout the hearing, I am also, again, here to assist.
Does the board have any questions for staff to assist with their understanding of this matter? Okay, seeing none. Board item 6.9, the public hearing on the matter at hand is now open. Public comments are not to exceed two minutes. Do I have any public comments?
There are no public comments.
Okay, the public hearing is now closed. Is there any further discussion on this matter by the board? Now, item 6.9 is concluded. The board will vote on an adoption of the district's initial proposal on Agenda Item 6.10.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion from Trustee Lang, second from Trustee Wright. No further requests or discussions. Assuming the interpretation of what approved means still holds true.
Well, this is our proposal, so I'm fine, I'm fine with approving that.
Oh, I see. Okay. Go ahead and vote on the item.
Trustee Jay.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Lang.
Aye.
Trustee Melchker.
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Trustee Rydel.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
And Trustee Monacy.
Aye.
Unanimous yes vote and student trustee yes vote. Moving on to 6.11. SOC CCD Academic Employee and Classified Administrative Personnel Actions. Any changes?
There are no changes.
Okay, Trustee Melchker.
Y- y- yeah, um, wait, I just wanted to, to say, can you hear me?
Yeah, hold on, is this a question or discussion?
No, I just have a remark to make about one of the items on this particular agenda item on the, um, on the, um, Academic Employee and Classified Administration Personnel Actions, okay?
Okay, but we need to have a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Okay. Uh, I was talking when that happened, so I don't know who said what.
I seconded.
I made the motion.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we have a motion, a second. Now, Trustee Melchker.
I just want to comment that, um, my fabulous Irvine Valley College Spanish instructor, Jeannie Igas, is retiring in December. And when she retires, she will have served IVC with distinction for 40 years and three months. Um, she's also incredibly knowledgeable in linguistics, as well as language pedagogue. Um, I, I actually began my Spanish studies in her fabulous rigorous Spanish class. Um, and she gave me a wonderful start and she even wrote the textbook. And becoming bilingual in Spanish led me to traveling, um, on my own to many Spanish-speaking countries and also led me to getting an AA degree in Spanish after my advanced degrees in biology and my community college teaching career. So Professor Igas, thank you for your wonderful service to IVC and IVC students and you'll be missed by us all. Thank you.
Here, here.
Yeah, she's wonderful.
All right. So with that, we'll go ahead and vote on the item.
Trustee Jay.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Lang.
Aye.
Trustee Melchker.
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Trustee Rydel.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
And Trustee Monacy.
Aye.
Unanimous trustee yes vote and student advisory vote. 6.12, Academic 21-22 Tenure Track Hiring Authorization.
Move approval.
I second it.
Motion from Trustee Lang, second from Trustee Jay. See any requests to speak, we'll go ahead and vote on the item.
Trustee Jay.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Lang.
Aye.
Trustee Melchker.
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Trustee Rydel.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
Trustee Monacy.
Aye.
Unanimous trustee yes vote, student advisory yes vote. 6.13, Classified Personnel Actions. Any changes?
There are no changes.
Move approval?
I second.
Motion from Trustee Melchker, second from.
Jay.
Jay.
Jay, okay. Seeing no requests to speak, we'll vote on the item.
Trustee Jay.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Lang.
Aye.
Trustee Melchker.
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Trustee Rydel.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
And Trustee Monacy.
Aye.
Unanimous trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. 6.14, Non-Bargaining Unit Personnel Actions. Any changes?
No changes.
Move approval.
Second.
I got a motion from Trustee Jay and a second from Trustee Lang, I believe.
Yes, that's right.
Okay. No requests to speak, we'll go ahead and vote on the item.
Trustee Jay.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Lang.
Aye.
Trustee Melchker.
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Trustee Rydel.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
And Trustee Monacy.
Aye.
Unanimous trustee yes vote and student advisory yes vote. 6.15, CSCA Memorating. 6.15, CSEA Memorandum of Understanding.
So moved.
Second.
Motion from trustee Jamal, second from trustee Jay. Seeing no requests to speak? We'll vote on the item.
Trustee Jay.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Lang.
Aye.
Trustee Melchiker.
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Trustee Rydel.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
Student trustee Monapi.
Aye.
Unanimous yes vote with a student trustee advisory vote. 6.16, Sabbatical Leave Indent.
Move second.
Motion from trustee Melchiker, second from trustee Lang. Seeing no discussion, we'll go ahead and vote on the item.
Trustee Jay.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Lang.
Aye.
Trustee Melchiker.
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Trustee Rydel.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
Student trustee Monapi.
Aye.
Unanimous trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. 6.17, General Leave Request to Approve Retroactive Leave of a Classified Manager.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Got a motion from trustee Jay, second from trustee Jamal.
I didn't second it, but that's fine. It's fine.
I, I, okay.
No, it...
It sounded like you. All right, go ahead and vote.
I think that was student trustee who seconded, right?
Oh, oh, okay. Well, yeah, give it to the student trustee. Trustee Lang.
Just a, a quick question for administration. I'm definitely supportive of both 6.17 and 6.18 for this particular individual and his circumstances, but I want to understand whether this sets any sort of future precedent that we might have an issue with.
I can answer that. Thank you for the question, trustee Lang. No, the education code allows for the Board of Trustees, at their discretion, to approve any paid or unpaid leaves, and you will maintain that discretion into the future, so you can choose at any time in the future to not approve a leave like this going forward.
Thank you.
Okay. Go ahead and vote on the item.
Trustee Jay.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Lang.
Aye.
Trustee Melchiker.
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Trustee Rydel.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
Student trustee Monapi.
Aye.
We have a unanimous yes vote with a student advisory yes vote. 6.18, General Leave Request Discretionary Leave of a Classified Manager.
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Jay with the motion, trustee Wright with the second.
President Prendergast, can I just make one qualifying statement? The reason you're approving both of these is because there's the Government Code section that says that if the employee has not been with the district for 12, or the public entity for 12 months, they're not entitled to paid leave. So when I, when I said that the Board could, going forward, make a different decision, you certainly could with any employee that hasn't yet been employed by the district for 12 months and is taking military leave. The reason we're asking for this leave is because we don't want Nick Wilkening harmed for coming and using his talents at our district because he hasn't yet been here 12 months, and that's why it's being brought forward for the Board of Trustees under the education code to approve paid leave for both the leave in June and the leave he's currently on in September.
Thank you. Seeing no discussion, we'll go ahead and vote on the item.
Trustee Jay.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Lang.
Aye.
Fixing it, I think.
I don't know. This happened last week, or last month. All right, I'm just going to say it out loud, and if they can hear us, it'll...
The audio, it says.
Trustee Lang was the last one, right?
Do you Melchiker, is that my next?
Yeah, trustee Melchiker.
Aye.
It's a nice thing we're doing, actually.
Trustee, trustee Prendergast, me, I, trustee Rydel.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
And trustee Monapi.
Aye.
All right, hopefully that counts.
You're the press.
You're right.
Yeah, but if it's not recorded, and they didn't hear it, and I don't know.
We heard it. It's being, the whole meeting's being recorded. It's still recording.
Okay, yeah. No, that just went away.
No, mine says it's still recording.
Okay.
Can you fill us in on what the vote was?
It's unanimous with a student trustee yes vote.
Thank you.
All right, so now we're moving on to reports. 7.1, Saddleback College, Irvine Valley College ATEP Vision and Mission Statement Review. Looks like they're wanting to make some changes. Any questions or comments on those? Okay, 7.2, Staff Response, No Public Comments Made. 7.3, Facilities Plan Status Report. Any questions or discussion on that?
I just wanted to point out that we put pictures in there this time, and that's something that we're going to try to do each quarter, so that you can kind of actually see the progress and what things are looking like.
Excellent.
Okay. That is very nice. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay, 7.4, CARES Act Funding Monthly Summary. Any questions or discussion on that? 7.5, COVID-19 Response Block Grant Money Summary. 7.6, OPEP Trust Fund. 7.7, Basic Aid Report. 7.8, Quarterly Financial Status Report. 7.9, Monthly Financial Status Report. Okay, going on to Reports from Administration. Chancellor, anything you want to highlight or add?
I would just follow on the other comments that were made, and please vote, because it's our privilege to be able to do so.
Irvine Valley College President, anything you want to highlight?
Okay, John.
No additional comments, thank you.
Okay. Saddleback College President.
No additional comments, just go Promise Program.
Okay. So with that, we will call the meeting adjourned at 9:54.